I will call the meeting to order for legislative session 2021-24 for December 21st, 2021. Those who like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do. My Father.
Lord have it.
Oh, be thy mean. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as it is in heaven. And give this as day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy news, the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is the approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the legislative minutes from December the 7th, 2021, special legislative session minutes from December the 7th, open work session minutes from September the 21st pertaining to a presentation by George Miles and Bure on the final draft of the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Master Plan, open work session minutes from October the 5th on the proposed aviation easement over tax map 49 parcel 204-5592 Airport Road in Salisbury, Maryland, and open work session minutes from October the 5th pertaining to the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021, police discipline and law.
Entertained a motion from council for their approval of the consent agenda.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, the approval of the consent agenda passes. At this time, we have a proclamation, if we could, for the recognition of the month of November as Family Court Awareness Month. Councilwoman Nicole Ackley will be—excuse me?
Do you have it?
Do we have the proclamation here?
Yes, we do have the proclamation. Let's grab that from the back.
We're printing it right now.
Oh, it's printed.
Hot off the press.
Ms. Kristi Staples? There you are. You'll be coming to the podium when Councilwoman Ackley comes out with the proclamation. There we go.
Nice to see you. That's good to see you, too. Thank you. Good morning, everyone, council citizens. Whereas the mission at One Moms Battle, OMB, and Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness of the importance of family court that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the family court awareness is to increase awareness of the importance of education, training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system, and to educate judges, other family court professionals, on the empirical data and research that is currently available, which is a critical component in making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the family court awareness is to increase awareness of the importance of education, training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system, and to educate judges, other family court professionals, on the empirical data and research that is currently available, which is a critical component in making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the family court is fueled by the desire for awareness and change in the family court system while honoring the children who have lost their lives in domestic disputes. Now, therefore, the acting county executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim November as Family Court Awareness Month in Wycomico County and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of the work done by the family court system. And I apologize that this proclamation is late, but thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thanks very much. You left so few words. I'm grateful, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go further, I'd like to make everybody aware that we are in the presence of several distinguished guests today. We have with us the past president of the city council, Mr. Mike Dunn. We have a past president of the Wycomico County Council, Gail Barkovich. Also, we have Mr. Tony Sarbans, and we have Mr. Phil Tillman. It's a pleasure to have you all here, and you're all here because you're still doing work for the county and for the community, so we do appreciate that very much. Thank you.
And Mr. Sarbans is a past president as well.
I believe I said that. Mr. Gail Barkovich, Mr. Sarbans, and Mr. Tillman. Thank you all. Mrs. Hurley.
Next on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on resolution number 144-2021. Before I proceed with that, though, I wanted to let you know that Mr. Mitchell is on his way. We had a legal matter we were discussing this morning, so he's just running a few minutes late, but he will be in attendance.
Okay.
Okay, so resolution number 144-2021 is approving the purchase of a portion of mitigation bank credits for the creation of a Maple Dam Conservation Wetland Mitigation Bank located in Dorchester County, Maryland, and described as parcel 20, lot 2, areas 44.139 plus or minus acres on a platent titled Agricultural Subdivision Plat on the Lands of Maple Dam Conservation LLC in the 13th Election District, Dorchester County, Maryland, tax map 52, grid 16, parcel 20, lot 1. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper stating that a public hearing would be held today at 10:00 a.m. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, the airport manager, if there are any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on resolution number 144-2021. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 144-2021.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation by the Charter Review Committee, and we have Mr. Mike Dunn here, who is the chairman of the committee, as well as several of the committee members.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn. Following the presentation, just so you are aware, we have certificates of appreciation for everyone, which we will award at the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Good morning, everyone, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Vice President. There you are. Members of the council. My name is Mike Dunn. I am the chair of the Charter Review Committee. To my right is Bob Benson, who is the vice chair of the Charter Review Committee, and to the left, of course, is Paul Wilber, who was indispensable as a sixteenth member of our Charter Review Committee. And members number 17 and 18 sit over there, that's Laura and Lynn, who did a wonderful job. But if you look behind me, we have some members of the Charter Review Committee here, and Tony Sarbans, Dr. Catherine Jones, Sonya Whitehead, Blair Todd, David Plots, Julie Bellamy, and Phil Tillman, who have joined us this morning. I'd also like to make sure that we recognize the other members of the Charter Review Committee could not make it this morning, Sharon Morris, Michelle Protani Chesnick, Matt Tillman, Wayne Strausberg, Dallas Baker, and Doug Gosnell. So in total, there were 15 of us, and we had one alternate, and that was John Rankin. So backing up a little bit, I think you all got what our work in your packet. You appointed us, thank you very much. It's been our pleasure to serve. You appointed us back in March, and we got to work right away. We met as a committee on the first and third Thursdays of each month. And again, Laura and Lynn, anything you want to know about what the work of the committee was is there forever. They provided great minutes in PAC 14. I think we televised virtually every meeting that we held. Our goal when we first got started was to look at this charter and try to figure out a way that it could be the vehicle to provide as much good governance—or the potential for good governance—as possible. And so that was our goal kind of going in. What we're going to share with you are not only the recommendations of the charter changes, and then we have 24 of them, but we also want to share with you the context, a little bit about the process, and some other ideas that we have that are not necessarily changes to the charter. We realize that some of the things that we may present may not be things that the council or the county executive's office agrees with, but our task was to do the best that we could as citizen volunteers to kind of review the charter. I will say collectively—and I think I speak on behalf of the entire committee—it's rare you find an opportunity to be this bored by doing anything publicly. Going through that charter is a painstaking thing. I say that kidding. We were honored to do it, but it was painstaking. And as you all know, going down the charter and even thinking about making some changes, quite literally every paragraph in the charter, you could go chasing down a rabbit hole and try to make it better and try to make it different. And one of our challenges was to not go down every single rabbit hole. As we move forward—that's our message—is let's move forward. We know that over the course of the last five years or so, things have been a little bit less than—less than smooth within the Wycomico County government. And our recommendation is to let's not look at the past and the things that happened. Let's try to figure out a way to move forward. A few things on process. In 2011, the last time there was a Charter Review Committee, apparently there were attendance issues, and so you populated this Charter Review Committee with 15 members, and you chose eight alternates. At our first meeting, we drew the alternates out of a hat because we realized that that probably wasn't going to be necessary. And so John Rankin did a great job as our number one alternate. And attendance in 2021 was phenomenal. Very proud that we had no fewer than 11 people at every meeting, and anytime somebody couldn't make it, they would either let myself or Laura know. So that worked out very well. How did we go about this? We didn't know what we were doing, by the way. We're just a bunch of volunteers. So we went in sequential order, literally. We started with Article 1, Section 101, and we just went down the charter. We kept—Laura kept—a scorecard, our name for it, scorecard of every recommended change that we thought should be looked at. We then went back at the end of our work and looked at the scorecard again. So in effect, we looked at everything that we recommended, not once but twice. We also, in reviewing the scorecard, actually took out a few of the first recommendations that we had made. We decided as a group, again with 24 recommendations, we decided—we had good debate about whether we should rank those recommendations for you. At the end of the day, after good discussion on that, it was a unanimous motion and unanimously passed that we not rank our recommendations. Our job is to go through the charter and now present our work to you and your job—and that's what Mr. Wilber will kind of go through in a minute—as to how you move forward. But we did not prioritize. We think that everything that we've recommended is something that we think would improve the charter, but again, we will yield to you all and the work that you now do with our report. I am going to read verbatim on a couple of things that we think were worth highlighting. The county executive form of government has now been in place for 15 years. Whether to keep that form of government or return to a council manic-only form of government was one of the 30 or so items that was referred to us by the members of the county council. We looked at every one of them. We made a unanimous vote at the first meeting, and we made a unanimous vote at a subsequent meeting to keep and recommend that the county executive form of government stay in place. That was the very first thing that we did. Now I'm reading two paragraphs verbatim. Throughout the course of deliberations over these last eight months, issues were raised and examples were given of actions by a prior county executive and/or the county council that the Charter Review Committee felt were violations of the plain language of the county charter. The committee began its work after a period of great conflict between the two branches of county government. From the committee's review, it seemed clear to us that not only was there a lack of communication, but there appeared to be an outright dislike and/or distrust of the other branch of government. As a result of this conflict, a primary question posed by the—again, more than 30 questions that the county council presented to us was whether some form of punitive consequences could or should be added to the charter to address future charter violations. And after exhaustive research on that topic, it was determined that punitive actions are difficult at best. Therefore, the CRC concluded that adding punitive provisions were not practical, and we make no formal recommendations for changes to the charter in that regard. Where the charter violations that had been identified for us to look at, were they charter problems or were they people problems? That's a conversation that we had constantly among the charter review. Did these, quote, violations or accusations of violations, did they stem from actual weaknesses in the charter, or did they stem from the breakdowns as described above, i.e. people problems? The consensus of the Charter Review Committee was that the so-called charter problems were more often people problems and were best resolved by a stronger resolve by the county council and the county executive to work together and to avoid taking, changing, altering the power structure that is currently outlined within the charter. The county charter is the law of the county, and it is its constitution. The consensus of the CRC was that the multiple charter changes, such as those included on the ballot in the 2016 election year, should be avoided in the future. Many of those charter changes appear to have been made to address that lack of communication between the executive and the council, and a perception by the council that the executive was not acting in accordance with the charter. The effect of the charter amendments was to alter the balance of power between the executive and the legislative branch to address this issue. The consensus of the CRC—and again, I want to repeat that—the consensus of the CRC was that while many of the amendments were perceived to be necessary—that are those that were made in 2016—to address the actions of the then-county executive, the result was that many of the changes weakened the charter. Mr. Benson is now going to speak on some things that we've asked you to consider—not charter recommendations, but just things that, again, came up during the course of our nine months together. These are things that we've outlined in bullet points for consideration by the council and the county government. Mr. Benson.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn called me yesterday, and I assured him I would be perfectly happy to sit behind him and nod my head in complete agreement with everything he said, but he asked me if I would address the section in the report labeled "For Your Consideration." Initially, let me just say, it was a pleasure to serve on the committee, and I want to thank the county council for the opportunity. I want to also express my gratitude to Mike Dunn personally, but hopefully also for all the members of the committee. He served as chairman. He was always prepared, and I think he made a strong effort to be fair with all the members of the committee and with fair with all the members of the public who appeared to have made comments, and I want to personally thank Mike for that. Prelimarily, in our report, there is a footnote on page three, and I want to just point that out as a preliminary to my statements. That footnote references Mr. Sarbans, who's been identified here as a member of the committee, but also a former president of the county council. And in our initial meeting, Mr. Sarbans made a motion, which the committee adopted, I think unanimously. And I think that Mr. Sarbans' motion provided much of the philosophy, I think, that the committee proceeded on. And I think that provides an explanation as to how we came up with the recommendations, but it also provides a background as to why the things for your consideration came about. Secondly, at the initial meeting, I think the committee adopted a policy or an idea that everything—we would try to do things by consensus. And I think almost uniformly, every recommendation we made was made by consensus. If it was something that got an eight to seven vote, we basically didn't put it in because we thought that in order for us to provide information to you guys, it should be something that overwhelmingly the committee supported, and I think we did that. For consideration, there are six bullet points, and I'm going to be as brief as I can in outlining them. The first bullet point relates to county council elections and districts. There was a discussion, spirited discussion in the committee about whether or not at-large districts were something that should be retained in the charter. And in that regard, Phil Tillman, also a former member of the council and president of the council, made a strong argument, I think, that the current form of government with at-large districts was something that should be retained. There was nonetheless a strong feeling among many members of the committee that the at-large districts is something that perhaps should be done away with. The committee as a whole did not make a recommendation with that regard, but we have raised it in here because it's something we think that if the county council has any interest in addressing, that it's something that probably the county council should consider appointing a specific committee to address because it's a complicated enough issue that it deserves consideration on an individual basis. The second issue—or second bullet point—has to do with revenue cap. The committee reviewed the revenue cap in some detail. It was our understanding that the revenue cap originated basically from one that had been adopted in Tava County, and it was coming up in this review, in part at least because Tava County last year, I think, revised its revenue cap. We reviewed what Tava County did in some detail, and it was our observation that what Tava County did, again, is they appointed a specific committee to look at that specific issue and not 25 other issues—not the charter as a whole, but that specific issue. And it's our thinking, I think, that if the county council is inclined to do anything with regard to the revenue cap, that it deserves a separate committee and the support from the council to provide information so that that committee can make an informed decision or recommendation to the council. Sections, bullet point four and five, Mr. Dunn has already touched on those to a large extent, but it has to do with violations of the county charter. There were a number of suggestions that perhaps the charter could be amended to address that and whether there were ways to put some punitive steps in the charter. The committee looked at that in great detail. We attempted to find other charters from other counties, not only in Maryland but outside Maryland where something like that was in the charter, and frankly, we didn't find anything, I don't believe, but if we did, it was minimal. In addition to that, we had the benefit of having a member of the Frederick County Charter Review Committee attend one of our meetings and make a presentation, and we specifically asked him if that issue had come up, and they had had the same exact question come up in Frederick County, and they had come to the same conclusion that our charter committee came to, and that was—it wasn't—there was nothing that was practical to put in the charter to address it. So as Mr. Dunn already mentioned in our report, our conclusion, I think, is that, number one, if there are disputes or issues between the county council and the county executive, that the best form of disinfectant—the best way to deal with that—is, number one, through sunlight to allow the public to know what's going on. And secondly, that there is a censure option that the county council would have if they think that the county executive is not doing something, and they may want to consider the daylight process and follow that with a censure process. The last item in there is bullet point number six, and that has to do with the Charter Review Committee itself. The current charter says that there will be a 10-year review. I think there was some consensus among the committee that the county council may want to consider perhaps a five-year or some other length time period. 10 years seems like a long time. There's a lot of information, a lot of things that change in 10 years, and something less than a 10-year standard may be where you want to go. And looking at it, I think we found that there were some—10 years was not abnormal, but there were counties who had lesser time periods, and one recommendation may be—you may want to think about having more than a 10-year review. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve, and it was—if not a pleasure, it was certainly interesting. I enjoyed the people on the committee. It was a pleasure dealing with all the people. It was a very spirited committee. There were not a lot of shy people on the committee, and I think everybody had strong opinions and voiced those opinions. So again, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Bob. Back at Bob, being the chair of this committee is challenging, but having Bob Benson as that voice, as that vice chair, having an attorney and bringing his expertise, it was great to pick his brain when needed. As part of what's been presented to you is our scorecard. It's our recommendations for changes to the ballot. I'm certainly not going to go over each one of them, but among, you know, those that are, you know, different and new, we recommend—in order to run for county council, you have to be a minimum of 25 years of age. In order to run for county executive, we think you should be 30 years old. We recommend getting rid of the county executive having to come before the council after each election to reappoint the members of the executive branch that have already been approved. We made that recommendation because we are all well aware of the mass exodus of Wycomico County, former Wycomico County employees who no longer work for Wycomico County but work in nearby jurisdictions, and we think that was at least a part of a contributing factor, so we recommend getting rid of that. We recommend under Article 6 that the personnel system return to the county executive as the starting point, and that whatever changes that he or she makes to the personnel system start at the office of county executive, and then, as with virtually every other decision, that comes then back to the county council for its review and looking and things like that. So again, there are a total of 24 recommended changes. I'm going to kind of turn the microphone over to Mr. Wilber because, again, at this point, our work is concluded, and we're presenting to you a body of work. We're prepared, should you have future work sessions where you want to ask questions about Article 6, Section 203—I'm making something up—that we have members of the Charter Review Committee, don't we, who have agreed to come back and help answer questions should you go down that road. But Mr. Wilber's going to kind of explain, you know, the what's next part of things.
The next step—I think most of you are probably aware—will be for the council to consider the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee, probably numerous work sessions. I talked with the Board of Elections yesterday just to set up a timeline. They would like to have for the November election the ballot questions by August, if not late July. So backtracking from that, that means the council will need to pass charter resolutions, hopefully, say, early June, as an example. So we have time enough to fine-tune our wording, to move it over to the Board of Elections so it will go on the ballot. Just trying to frame this up, say, the work for perhaps the next six months.
Good.
And I will second that. The committee has been serious and conscientious in their work on this, and I think certain members would be willing to come before you and discuss particular points at work sessions.
And lastly, we'll certainly take any questions, but on speaking personally, and I think
And I will second that. The committee has been serious and conscientious in their work on this, and I think certain members would be willing to come before you and discuss particular points at work sessions.
And lastly, we'll certainly take any questions, but on speaking personally, and I think on behalf of the committee, this was tedious, it was laborious, but ultimately gratifying. We thank each and every one of you for the appointment. I think it's important to note for the record that we engaged and encouraged our county council members to participate, and many of you did. I recall, Mr. Holloway came on more than one occasion, and on one night, I think we brought him up to the podium to kind of ask him questions, no more than, no less than four or five times, and we appreciate, he was there and ready, and Councilman Hastings and Councilman Cannon, it was just, Council President, excuse me, it was very much appreciated. And I remember at one point, I did not mean it, we were at the Civic Center that night, and Joe was back there chatting, and I'd asked him a question, and I didn't realize that he hadn't necessarily been following what we were doing. He was in conversation with someone else, and I apologized to him that night. But he worked his way through and answered pretty well, even though he sort of missed that. But we encourage that, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide the feedback. I will also say, again, for the record, having so many former members of government, whether that Sharon Morris and Wayne Strausberg from the administrative side, having Mr. Sarbans and Phil Tillman from the, you know, formerly elected side, having attorneys, it just, and then having some true people, rookies, if you will, who didn't know much about government, it really brought for a good team. And I will say, I'm very proud of the work that we did, and, you know, we did it all, as, as Mr. Benson said, and Paul, things were spirited at times, but at the end of the day, you lay a motion on the floor, and it either proceeds or, or it doesn't. So, on behalf of the committee, thank you all very much for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Wycomico County and the Wycomico County government. I'm glad to take any questions that anybody might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any comments, you know, we will have work sessions to get any Q and A, but any comments from council members? Mr. Dunn?
I'll just say very briefly, the, this is a Herculean task, and you all had, this was an amazing group of people. I watched multiple times, I don't know how many volunteer hours were logged in that whole process, but there was a number of meetings, and really, really, really good debate, and it's great to be able to see how it reflected some of the questions that we've had in the last couple of years. So, really, thank you very much for your leadership, Mr. Benson, especially Mr. Dunn, and all of you for all of what you did. That was really helpful. The only question I had was just the, I think that we have a lot of potential recommendations. How do we, you know, how do we get this on the, would these be 24 separate recommendations or more, you know, or maybe it's more of a legal question there, but we, and I also want to say, just to the, to the group here, is great of a job you all did in communicating back and forth in the way that you presented things in the discussion. I think this body would probably do as, as good a job as possible in, in making sure that we meet the intent of what you are bringing up and, and, and not take lightly the recommendations that you have made. So, thank you all very much for that, I really appreciate it. And for the legal question, how do we, how do we get this on the ballot? This is a lot of questions.
Certainly with so many recommendations, it's how do you present this in a way that the public can absorb it? And at the present time, my thought is, the charter resolution and the ballot question would be per article with subparts. It's, it is a bit of a challenge.
Right. So there would be at least 24 ballot questions?
Well, say if there's, say, six articles that the council decides to make a charter resolution about, then perhaps six ballot questions with subparts.
Right. Councilman Holloway?
I just wanted to say thank you. I did enjoy attending those meetings. It was very interesting to see how people did engage, and the history of some of the folks that came to the, or participated, Mr. Tillman, Mr. Sarbans, and some of the other folks, was quite helpful, and I appreciate your calling on me, letting me share my opinions. Okay, so everybody's got those, you know. So, thanks again.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you all personally. You guys did a lot of work, and you had a wealth of knowledge with your members, and I don't think you could have been as precise if you didn't have Mr. Sarbans and Mr. Tillman and others like them. So, you had a good committee there, so thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
I, I also wanted to thank, thank everyone in the committee members. I think that we had some discussion on how we would select and assemble a Charter Review Committee, but it, it turned out to be a very nice, diverse group with some really productive conversation. We had representation from the rural communities, from the different municipalities, and I think that led to some great progress. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
I, I could only repeat what everyone's already said, Michael. Well orchestrated, the meetings that I went to, I was also always so amazed at how well things were thought out, how productive everyone discussed all of the issues in such a professional manner. It was so well done to evaluate each, each question that came before the group, and I think that shows in the final end product that you have here today. So again, thank you very much. We will certainly take you up on your offer, and any of those members who you volunteered to be at the next work session.
There they are, right there.
Yes. So, we certainly will take that into consideration as we do go through our, our work session with the chair, the vice chair, as well as any of the members. That being said, I'm assuming we're all through. Great, you're, you're all good. If you could come to the podium, and any of the members that would like to, for Mr. McCain, he will be presenting the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
I know we got several of the committee members here, so if you all could join me up here. We can kind of, yeah, we can kind of line up on both sides. And so, now that I have the podium, I've got the bullet point, I'll make, I'll make my comments, but the, you know, I do want to thank all of you for your participation. You know, I'm going to use the term that Councilman Hastings used. I mean, it was a Herculean effort, you know. We only do this every 10 years, and I know we appoint a lot of committees, but of all the committees we appoint, certainly this probably demands the most time, and the fact that, and Mike Dunn had mentioned this, you know, the attendance from the people in the committee, you know, when we first appointed this, you know, we, we appointed several alternates, you know, because we were just, we knew this was going to take a lot of time, and, you know, we were concerned people may not be able to meet that obligation. However, all of you rose to the occasion, so we really appreciate your steadfastness and, and devotion, and, you know, we couldn't have asked for more, and now it's, you know, it's our turn to, you know, consider your recommendations and take this to task, and, but, you know, we just can't thank you enough. So, with that said, we have certificates of appreciation here, we want to present to each of you. I'm going to read the first one, and I'm not going to read each one because they all say the same thing, but then we'll present this, present this to each one of you. So I'll read this one first, and this one happens to be to Mike, so I'll start with him. This is a certificate of appreciation for Mike Dunn. The Wycomico County Council would like to express its sincere gratitude to Mike Dunn for serving as chairman of the 2021 Wycomico County Charter Review Committee. The Charter Review Committee meets once every 10 years for the purpose of reviewing the charter in full and submitting recommendations to the county council. Mike Dunn's dedication to the citizens of Wycomico County is greatly appreciated, and his time spent assisting the committee was invaluable. Thank you, Mike, for your time and expertise serving as chairman of the 2021 Wycomico County Charter Review Committee, and this is presented by all the members of the Wycomico County Council. Mike, thank you very much. And actually, the next one here is for my fellow native Del Mar person, Mr. Robert Benson, is vice chairman. This basically reads the same, but, Bob, thank you very much for being the vice chairman. And also, we have with us today Julie Bellamy. Julie, thank you. And we also have with us, some people aren't with us today, so, Mike, can you give those that, that aren't here? Okay. Yep. Here's this for Michelle. Dr. Catherine Jones. Phil Tillman. Phil, thank you very much. And Dave Plotz, I knew Dave's here. Dave, thank you. My good friend, Tony Sarbans. Tony. And we have Blair Todd. Blair's with us. Blair, thank you very much for serving. And last but not least, Sonia Whitehead. And once again, this is give a big hand to all of these people for their dedication. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
While they're behind me, I do not underestimate this, that this was a team effort, and this was one heck of a team to work with, the, their dedication, their loyalty. All I had to do was listen for motions and, and look left and look right, and we always had amazing things that came out of the mouths of this committee, and we tried to move them forward. So, thank you all very much for this, and thank you.
Before you leave, can you stand around the podium so I can get a picture real quick? Some of you guys were hidden. If you, yeah, that's a little better. Yes. Thank you. Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 145-2021. This is authorizing the Acting County Executive to accept an American Rescue Plan, Maryland, American Rescue Plan, Maryland Department of Education Childhood Stabilization Grant for three kids' club after-school program sites in the amount of $150,000 to the Wycomico County Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. And we have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, as well as Katie Rouse, the Deputy Director.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 145-2021.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes. Steve, Katie, if you, thank you very much. Stay to, your name for the public, please, and your, your positions.
Katie Rouse, I'm Deputy Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Steve Miller, Director for Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
So I know you probably know this question's coming. I see it's, you're using some of the funding for West Side Intermediate. Will this cover some of the days, the half-days on Wednesday that, where the school day is cut short? Will this provide childcare for that half-day?
My understanding is that we've traditionally, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, traditionally not run programs when school lets out early.
Okay.
That's my understanding. I'll, I'll double check that, but I believe that's the case.
Could it possibly be done at the community center?
We can, we can look at that as far as childcare goes. That might be just conversations we'll need to hear from parents and, and try to figure out logistics on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to point out that this is a good program, and I took advantage of it with my two kids. It's educational, they help the kids with homework afterwards, also entertain them. And I don't believe that when school's out, that they do hold kids' club, because the schools are closed. But I always have my kids after the program was shut down anyway for school closing, but it's a benefit to the citizens, and a lot of us couldn't have done it without this program.
All right. When you were referring to the West Side Community Center, I think it's already closed for the year.
Now, we're, we're still running programs out of West Side. Now, the, the after-school program.
The program's closed.
Yeah, so what, what ended up happening at the after-school program is we had two children in the fall program, and we were trying to get more children to participate, and we weren't able to do that. So what we did is work with those two families to combine them with the program at West Side Intermediate. We just felt like that would be a better experience for those families, and also help us consolidate our staffing resources, so, and that'll take effect after the new year.
What, what came into play when you evaluated the amount of funds, the distribution of the funds to the three separate schools?
So, in order to qualify for the funding, you had to be licensed, so right now, we're only, we generally would have seven licensed sites, and then also the West Side Community Center. Right now, we're only able to run three because of our staffing issues, finding enough staff to work, and also interest from students. So, the three that we had got it, and it was based on how many spots you have at each, you're licensed for at each location.
So the, the schools that received more money, the kids' club is simply because they had more attendees?
Yeah, and because they're currently running. So those are the only three schools that are currently running, and if they receive more money, it's based on the licensed number of spots that we can have at each location.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one more question. Why isn't kids' club offered in middle school?
I think the demand for, for what we've heard from parents is that the, the need is greater at the elementary level.
Sure. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 145-2021, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 146-2021, authorizing Exxon Enterprises Inc. as a sole source vendor for the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office's purchase of body cameras and tasers during the fiscal year 2022. This resolution does require a supermajority vote in favor in order for it to pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 146-2021. To move? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Question? Mr. Rice?
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent for Wycomico County.
Major Todd Richardson, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for being here. Thank you all for putting this together and making this presentation. The question I have is, this is required by state law now?
It will be, it's being slowly phased in. Our program has been in effect since '18, and this is merely a update of our current program because we've had to expand due to the state mandates.
And I remember I was talking about this before, and I, I don't know if you had some trial cameras or not, but weren't the body worn cameras supposed to work in conjunction with the dash cam?
Yes, sir. We are currently in the process of expanding our dash cam camera to go-to Axon, so that will be in addition to that, along with, we're having to expand our sheriff's emergency response team to wear these also. They're going to have to be helmet mounted versus chest mounted because of the equipment. So therefore, we needed to buy or, or purchase more cameras and expand the current contract. In order to do that, we need a new contract, and that's what we're here before you with.
So the new body worn cameras will work with the dash cams, the old dash cams?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, if a vehicle passes us that has a vehicle camera on and it's activated, it will automatically activate your camera.
Wow. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, any more comments from gentlemen? All those in favor of Resolution 146-2021, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Vice President Davis is absent on this particular motion. Resolution passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 147-2021. You will see an updated copy of this resolution on the council table. It's also identified as Legislative Bill Number 2021-07. This is to establish the boundaries for the council manic districts as a result of publication of the decennial census figures. I'm going to let Mr. Mitchell go over the process for you. We do have Chairman Gail Barkovich here, and Mr. Frank McKenzie, the GIS Coordinator and Chief of Technical Services with the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, if there are any questions.
It came to Laura and I, it came to the attention of Laura and, and me this morning, that there is some question as to whether this should be passed by resolution, as has been done in the past, or by legislative bill. And looking over the comments, I came down on the side of legislative bill. So then we took a look at where we stand with time, and it's pretty tight. I understand from Laura that we have to have the information on the boundaries to the Election Committee very early in January. So, we sort of reverse engineered and determined that even though it's called a resolution, at this point, it still qualifies as legislative bill. It was publicly advertised, it, there was a public hearing held on December the 7th, and you're back here now to, to consider. now to, to consider it. The only, I, I would suggest to be passed with both titles, which is very unusual, but, um, I think it's, it can be done. I would insert in the, the version that's on your desk and then now there wherefore, I would add after resolved, put and enacted, uh, picking up the legislative, uh, lingo. And in that same paragraph, I would put a section one where it says as follows section one and have those three items that are there. And I'd put a section two and I'd add the standard language of, uh, being enacted that legislative bill, uh, shall be known, um, as, uh, 2021 dash oh seven. Wacomiko County, Maryland shall take effect 60 days after its final passage unless a proper, uh, petition for rest for it shall be filed prior to that said date, in which event the bill shall not take effect until 30 days following approval of the bill by majority of qualified voters in the county with such a referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I think what we'll do here is, um, we'll do this in two separate steps. One for the resolution and the second one we'll do with the bill and try to remember what, uh, amendments Mr. Mitchell has, is recommending for the legislative bill only, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion for the council to approve Resolution Number 147, 2021.
To move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. At this time, we would like to entertain a motion to approve Legislative Bill Number 2021 oh seven.
To move.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. Also, I didn't know whether or not, um, Mrs. Barkovich, would you have any comments at this time? Thank you. Uh, Mr. McKenzie, okay. I think what we'd have to do is entertain a motion. I would need a motion on the floor, uh, to amend this legislative bill as, uh, Mr. Mitchell's recommendations. I think that's as far as we have to go without exactly, um, repeating everything that Mr. Mitchell stated. Uh, we would also need a signature from the county executive. Is that correct, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, on the legislative bill, yes.
On the legislative bill. Uh, so we would need an amendment to that effect.
Offer motion for the amendment.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The bill has been amended. Any further discussion on Legislative Bill 2021 oh seven as amended?
I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Mitchell for taking into consideration the, um, name change, uh, from resolution to legislative. Careful there, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Any other questions, comments?
I just, I just had one. Ms. Barkovich, it's from Ms. Barkovich. Please.
Please. You can state your name and your, your title. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Gail Barkovich. I was Chairman of the Redistricting Committee.
When we heard, um, the Charter Review Committee made the suggestion that we have a subcommittee to look at the outlarge members, was there discussion of that in your committee also?
It was brought up a couple of times just for, um, basically discussion, but we never addressed that issue because it wasn't part of our charge. And we did have a couple of people mention it to us that there might be, um, that there were going to be suggestions to the Charter Committee, Review Committee about possibly changes in the charter regarding the redistricting committee and representation of the county council.
So when that comes back around for us to discuss, um, those charter amendments, would you be willing to come back and speak on that of what came out of your committee?
Um, I don't think we had anything in the minutes about it. No, we didn't have anything in the minutes because it really wasn't our, as I said, it wasn't our charge and we tried to stick to our charge, um, even though it was brought to our attention and, um, that the Charter Review Committee was going to be meeting and possibly making some suggestions to you. And it was one of my suggestions to the members also if they were interested in, um, making changes to the charter regarding the redistricting commission, committee, um, and what our charges would be that they speak with the Charter Review Committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mrs. Barkovich. So at this time, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Legislative Bill 2021 dash oh seven as amended. We'll do this by a roll call. Councilman Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ackley?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilman McCain?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So unanimously, uh, bill number, Legislative Bill Number 2021 dash oh seven passes as amended unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, next is the submission of three appointments to the Wacomiko County Commission for Women. The Wacomiko County Commission for Women supports the mission of the Maryland Commission for Women in promoting social, political, and economic equality for women in Maryland. Resolution Number 148 dash 2021 is confirming the appointment of Catherine M. Fiddler, DNP, MBA, RN, as a member of the Wacomiko County Commission for Women.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 148, 2021.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 149 dash 2021, confirming the appointment of Julie Giardano as a member of the Wacomiko County Commission for Women.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 149, 2021.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 150 dash 2021, confirming the appointment of Tiffany C. Arrington, MA, of the Wacomiko County Commission for Women.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 150, 2021.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes. We'd like to thank them for, uh, for volunteering their names and those who recommended them.
Next is the submission of an appointment to the Wacomiko County Board of Appeals. The Wacomiko County Board of Appeals reviews applications for special exceptions and variances from the Wacomiko County zoning code based on information presented by the applicant and supplemental data provided by staff members. Resolution Number 151 dash 2021 is confirming the appointment of James F. Morris as a member of the Wacomiko County Board of Appeals.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 151, 2021.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 151, 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Compensation Allowance Committee and we have Dr. Memo Deriker here, Chairman of the Committee, as well as some of the, um, committee members.
Morning, Dr. Deriker.
Good morning. It's nice to take this thing off.
Good morning, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the council. Thank you for volunteering us to serve on this commission. Uh, as was the case with the previous presentation by Mike Dunn. It has been an honor to serve. Uh, it was a lot of work and some members of the commission are here with me today. And we met virtually as well as in person seven times during the months of November and December to deliberate over the recommendations we will be making to you today. In making these recommendations, we've relied on best practices used in determining compensation for government agencies, nonprofit organizations, as well as private sector organizations. Uh, if you recall, I've chaired this commission now. This is my fourth time. I'm a 33-year resident of, in fact, one of my former members is sitting here. I'm a 33-year proud resident of the Wacomiko County and it truly was an honor to serve to make these recommendations. The process was relatively simple, although, uh, fairly complex. We looked at a variety of scenarios to develop potential compensation scenarios to deliberate. And in those scenarios, we looked at, uh, nonprofit organizations, private sector organizations, other government agencies, counties throughout Maryland, as well as in other parts of the country. As a result of that scenario analysis, we came up with a number of different scenarios that we brought to the, uh, members' attention. And through the course of these, uh, seven meetings, we deliberated and came up with the recommendations that you have in front of you. And, uh, just quickly going over it, after careful deliberation, the commission recommends an annual compensation of $124,000 for the county executive beginning in 2022. For the council president position, $25,000 beginning in 2022. Council vice president, $23,000. Council member, $21,000. The council also recommends that no changes be made to the current allowances benefits, continue unchanged. The commission, uh, made three additional recommendations. Number one, beginning with the 2024 fiscal year, the compensation for all of these positions should be automatically adjusted annually with the same cost of living adjustment offered to regular county employees. We've consulted with the National Association of Counties and this seems to be the current best practice. You just heard recommendations from, from the Charter Review Commission. We were in, uh, communication with them. In fact, one of our members was also a member of that commission. And we believe that the language of the charter should, uh, contain a base figure for some of these, uh, compensation levels that then the future commissions can rely on, um, for making adjustments or making adjustment recommendations. Uh, we also recommend that the timing of these deliberations by the commission be moved back so that the optics involved in too close to the next set of elections should be avoided. In fact, the current language allows you to start these processes at the midpoint of the, uh, four years, uh, election cycle, although you still would have to vote in the final year of the election, the deliberations can be made and the presentations can be made to you earlier to give you more time to, to consider the recommendations. We also, as has been our tradition in the past four, uh, past three times we did this, made a recommendation for the sheriff's position. Uh, we recommend that $121,000, beginning with the 2020 session, be the recommended compensation for the sheriff's position, as well as the same recommendation of no changes to the allowances and cost of living adjustments as we made for the other elected official compensation recommendations we have made. With that, I'd like to thank you again for allowing us to, uh, come to this room and make our deliberations and thank everybody involved, uh, the, the commission members as well as others who gave us input. And I have to say that these, uh, meetings, as has been the case in the past three times, have been professional, courteous. When we agree, when we disagreed, we agreed to disagree and we were never disagreeable. And, uh, with the exception of the sheriff recommendation, all other recommendations were unanimous. On the sheriff's recommendation, there was one nay. But, uh, again, the commission has been nothing but studious, courteous, and very, very professional. And I thank them, uh, I believe five of them are behind me. Do I, do we have five today? If they would please stand up just for a second.
We will be recognizing them at the podium as well, please.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes.
I, I thank members of my commission. Uh, as, as Mike Dunn said, for his commission, maybe not as difficult as what they went through, but it was pretty, pretty complex that we had to go through. Because each compensation contains so many factors that have to be taken into account that putting all that together and then having a, a robust and vigorous debate to arrive at these recommendations with, with total respect for each other, I, I'm proud. Thank you very much.
Very good. And thank you, Dr. Deriker. Any brief comments from council members? Yes?
Dr. Deriker, thank you very much for your, for your, for you, um, spending the time on your vacation, explaining to me how these equations were made and how they were...
Only six time zones away.
I really, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Dr. Um, Deriker and, um, committee members, I do want to thank you as well. I know you all put a lot of time and effort in there because I talked to some of the committee members and, um, uh, nothing was rubber stamped. You guys did a lot of deliberation, so thank you for all of that. I, I have a question. I know one of the discussions was, um, the last time the executive got an increase, the executive position got an increase. What year was that and what year was the last time the council got an increase?
Executive has never received an increase. It's the same amount from the day it was put into the charter. The council one, it's in our minutes, but I'm forgetting now. 2006?
I think, no, I think, uh...
1994.
Yeah.
Oh, even worse.
Josh was 12.
I'll be 40 next year.
In fact, i- in our, in our report, we mentioned that these have not changed in, in such a long time.
That's interesting.
And my worry, personal, this is not the commission, this is me, the residents speaking, is if, if action is not taken now, we're going to get to a point that we had many years ago with the voice issue, if you'll recall.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
And I would also like to thank you that you, you all had so many variables to consider and I know you, you worked through it so well. Uh, you're very thorough and we do thank you for your recommendations. And I would also, uh, say to you as I did to, uh, Mr. Dunn, that we certainly would welcome your participation or any of the members, uh, when we go through this with, in our work sessions.
You're very good at volunteering.
Yes. Good. Wonderful. Wonderful. Uh, Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Wilbur, I think some things we might need to review very carefully in what, uh, the committee has recommended, uh, regarding, uh, timing sequences and, and when we reevaluate this because state statute, we may have to look at possibly introducing or requesting legislation on a state level.
If you're going to change it, but...
Yes.
But you already have language that allows you to start the process a little earlier.
Understood. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Vice President Davis will be meeting everyone at the podium and presenting proclamations for, uh, for your great work. So thanks again.
President Cannon?
Yes.
I just want to mention that if, should council decide to, um, do any increases to the salaries, um, there are different ways in which that would have to be accomplished. The county executive, for example, his, um, compensation is actually in the charter. So that would actually have to be approved as a charter ballot, um, resolution. The salary increases for the county council would have to be done by legislative bill because their salaries are actually in the county code. Um, if you were, if you decide to increase the sheriff's salary, that could be done by resolution. So there's different ways for each one of them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hurley.
Again, I would like to thank you guys for your such hard work and for decently salaries. I'm going to read the certificate, the first one's for Dr. Deriker. I'm going to read the one and then I'll go through the list of people that are here. The Wacomiko County Council would like to express a sincere gratitude to Dr. Memo Deriker for serving as Chairman of the 2021 Wacomiko Compensation and Allowance Commission. The Compensation and Allowance Commission studies the compensation allowance paid to the county executive and the members of the county council and submits it recommendations for compensation and allowance within 15 days after the beginning of the fourth year of the term of each council. Dr. Memo Deriker's dedication to the citizens of Wacomiko County is greatly appreciated and his time spent assisting the commission was invaluable. Thank you, Dr. Memo Deriker, for your time and expertise serving as the Chairman of the 2021 Wacomiko County Commission and Allowance Commission.
Ernie, even though they're not present, if you could read off their names so the public recognizes who, who participated? Thank you.
Sue Cooper, PhD. Victoria Miel. Sharon Morris. Mark Rudney. Michelle Wright. Murray Mingeson. Victor Laws. John Awkward.
That was awkward.
Andrew Byer. And Michelle Chesnick.
All right. If anyone would like to make comments, feel free. We don't often get taken up on that request, but...
As an attorney, I'd be remiss if I didn't make a comment. I would just encourage you to read the minutes. There's, uh, Ms. Hurley prepared a very robust set of minutes to all of our meetings and I think they're very informative as to some of the pros and cons. And if you don't already have them in your briefing book, I think they would be illuminating for the discussions you're going to have in the future.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
But it was a pleasure to serve on the committee, and I appreciate the work that everybody put in.
Thank you.
I should say thank you for allowing me to serve. It was a pleasure.
Great, thanks again. Thanks, thanks very much to you all.
Come closer to the podium. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution number one fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty-one, authorizing the acting county executive to accept emergency rental assistance program grant award funds from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development in an amount up to eight million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars for citizens needing emergency rental assistance in Wacomiko County. And we have Mr. Jesse Drew here with the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, if there are any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution number one fifty-three, two thousand and twenty-one.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Hang on one second. Okay, the chair needs to abstain on this just for the record. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
This president abstained, too.
So we have two abstentions and five ayes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. At this time, we will need to adjourn from legislative session, entertain a motion to adjourn so we can go into an open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the, are we there yet? No, we're not there yet. Okay, just entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session and convene as the Urban Services Commission.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Legislative session is temporarily adjourned. Mrs. Hurley.
Okay, before the Urban Service Commission is Resolution number oh-three dash two thousand and twenty-one. This is to approve a invoice and payment for a village downriver sewage system repair pursuant to the amended and restated shared facility agreement between Wacomiko County, Maryland, Wacomiko County Urban Services Commission, and Village Downriver Condominium Association, Inc. This request is a supplemental request to Resolution number oh-one, two thousand and twenty-one, that was approved in April of this year, which authorized five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars from the sewer replacement fund for costs associated with moving a monitoring well. The original quote did not include funding for the calibration of that monitoring well, so additional funding is needed. We have Mr. Marka Brush here, president of the Village Downriver Homeowners Association, if you have any questions.
Entertaining motion from the Urban Service, Urban Services Commission to approve Resolution number zero-three, two thousand and twenty-one.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Mr. Abrams, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay, we appreciate your, the role that you've taken on very much. All those in favor of Resolution number zero-three, two thousand and twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passed. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn from the Urban Services Commission and reconvene into legislative session to Wacombe County Council.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now adjourned from the Urban Services Commission and reconvene as Wacombe County Council in legislative session. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If anybody in the public would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, please. State your name and your county of residence and what your concerns might be.
Good morning to all. My name is Anthony Dickerson. I'm the executive director of the Christian Shelter, and I'm here today to present ten of our history books. Someone graciously gave us a donation in honor of the city, county council, I'm sorry, and I wanted to present each member with a copy of our book, which was penned by John Rampkin. And what he has done is he's captured our history from beginning to where we are now to where we're going to be. And you'll find that it's some interesting reading in this book. It was well-written. And so, on behalf of the Christian Shelter, the board members, and myself, and my staff, I want to present to each member of the county council a copy of our history book.
Thank you.
Donation, I mean, make deliveries there once.
And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the work that you do. The Christian Shelter is such a vital component of our community, so thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Colin Zimmerman, Coastal Association Realtors and Wacomiko County resident. I'm going to put on two hats today. So my first hat will be my resident hat. Prior to coming to the Coastal Association of Realtors, I spent twenty-some-odd years running political campaigns. And one thing I as well suggest to you is, as quickly as you can deciding on charter review amendments, because it's going to take some time for the community to absorb that, and you're going to need some sort of campaign to probably pass them. And you will probably have community advocates who will help you with that. You will have businesses who have an interest in helping with that, but, but it's going to take some time, it's going to take some money. So the quicker that can come to pass and you can actually get something prepared, the more time you'll have to educate the public on the issues that are going to be on the ballot, especially if you're going to have other issues like compensation issues and other things. There's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a long ballot, it's going to be a complicated ballot, so, so the quicker that can get done, the better. I'm going to put on my Realtor hat for a moment as, as the government affairs director for the Realtors. In your, in your work session, you're going to be discussing a proposed legislation for property eviction process. Although I haven't seen the finished bill yet, and, and we'll, we'll reserve judgment for when actually the finished bill is, and it'll go to our state legislation. We do support the concept of, of a change in the process of the eviction. We, we don't necessarily want to move up the eviction process, we don't want to make it shorter, but we do know that at the end of the eviction process, when the sheriff's office comes and everything gets put on the street, it's hard. It's hard for everybody. It's hard for the homeowner, it's hard for the property manager, it's hard for the tenant, it's hard for the sheriff's office or the city courts, it's hard for, people have to clean up. So being able to lock the doors, protect the property that's inside frees up a lot of resources for the county, frees up resources for the, the property manager, and makes it a little bit of a more pleasant process for everyone involved. So the Coastal Association Realtors, representing a thousand members in Wacomiko, Worcester, and Somerset County, would support that as it was proposed in two thousand and twenty, and assuming it's not dramatically different. And if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, I have some.
All right, that concludes public comments.
Sorry.
That concludes public comments. Councilman Holloway.
Thank you. Sorry about that. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We're going into our Christmas season, and try to stay safe out there. The past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to be in three parades that were put on the Salisbury, Willards, and Delmore. And the volunteerism that was there and the dedication to putting all that together was unbelievable. We had a great time. Kids loved it, and all the participants loved it. So that was, that was really good. It was great to be back to some kind of normal again. Hopefully working, I'm hoping we can stay there. This past week, I had the opportunity to spend two evenings with two of our local towns at the town hall meetings, Pittsfield and Willards. It's great to see how their local governments work. That is local government. We're local, they're really local. So, I mean, I tell a story. We were at one of the meetings one night, and they were talking about the problem with some ditches, and one of the people on the council turned around and opened the curtain up and said, "That ditch right over there is the one we're having a problem with." So I don't see how much more local you can get than that, you know? And you can look out the window and see the problem, so did have that. So again, Merry Christmas to everybody, all my colleagues up here, all the folks in the audience, and all the folks watching Pac-14. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other council comments?
Just a couple of quick comments. You know, we've had several commissions report to us today, and just once again, want to thank all those people from our community that was willing to serve on those commissions. You know, that, that's what makes our community great, and also for us. You know, it does a lot of work that we don't have that opportunity to invest the, you know, necessarily the time and resources they can by the fact they can singularly focus on the one topic they've been assigned to address. So, you know, their contribution is certainly, is very much appreciated, so I just want to thank them again. And just lastly, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we'll, we'll see you next year.
Josh.
I'll continue on the theme of, Mr. Holloway mentioned volunteerism, and so did Mr. McCain, same thing. You know, that's three commissions we mentioned here today, Charter Review, Redistricting, and Compensation Committee. I love the fact that Wacomiko County has a great ethics, ethic of service and volunteerism, and it shows. So thank you very much for all who are part of that as well. I could also mention, of course, our staff, who, who also, I know Lynn and Laura do amazing job there, and it's a lot of extra work, so thank you for what you do. Last things, I'll say, the Wacomiko Youth Advisory Commission, we, well, we need to get some new, we've, we've had some younger folks who are, have moved on and are gone to college and others, and now we need to get new members onto that, so we're about to put out a press release, but if you have anyone that you know that is a younger, younger than eighteen, and I forget the cap is, if there's a lower round, but we need to get as many people to apply as possible. And we have a lot of openings on the Youth Advisory Commission, so we're going to put that out pretty soon, too. And then Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Any comments?
Holiday season, it's a great time, it's a great time for giving and being joyous, but just keep in mind there are some families that struggle to pay their bills, to pay their rent, to put food on the table. And I truly appreciate the charities out there who are helping those families and teaching the young, the young folks that we have in our county the importance of reaching out to those in need, and to all the council members up here that have participated in doing that. So thank you.
Larry?
Yeah, as Mr. Holloway said, I too attended these parades, and it is great to see the community come back together, and there are a lot of people in these parades and watching it. And there were a lot of kids that were happy seeing the fire trucks and seeing their council members, too. But it was a great time, and I want to mention that this was a, a long, busy year, but it went by quick, and I want to thank the hard work of Ms. Sandy and Ms. Hurley, and also our council attorney, welcome back, and thank you, Mr. Wilbur, for filling in for him. And Levin is on vacation, and I do want to thank him as well. He stays pretty busy with us. And I think my mic's not working, but anyway, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and at the next meeting will be a new year, so good luck and stay safe.
If it's appropriate, I just like, I like to say, we were talking about parades. We didn't have a parade in Allen this year, but the fire department was out in force, and followed by a very antique engine with Santa Claus. So they drove through the village and all around the area.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and to this time of year, everybody's in a rush. Slow down. We've had some very serious accidents over the past week or so. So just take your time and be conscious of your fellow man, so.
The only thing I would add was, had the opportunity with Vice President Davis to attend the, one of our very few recognition, sign, street sign recognitions with, for Clinton Franklin Stewart. It was a very well, well-done event. It was certainly well-deserved, and we appreciate everyone in the community for recommending that, and the council, the county being able to recognize Mr. Stewart. Also attended, Joe, while you were at council meetings, I was in Delmore, and attended their town council meeting, Mayor Jordan, congratulations, and the new, newly-elected members, and those still serving. It was a very enjoyable evening. I did miss the Willards' parade. We had family in from Pennsylvania. Was that postponed from Saturday to Sunday?
I don't know, it took some, it did rain, but you have to get a, being you live on the west side, you have to get a permit to come over there. Prior, prior to showing up, you know?
How much are those permits now?
Ten dollars.
They were awful expensive.
They were ten dollars.
Last year, they were really expensive. Thank you. And also attended the viewing for George Whitehead in Pittsfield. Such a, such a great leader in the Pittsfield community, such a, such a great guy, and attended that very nice ceremony. Also, as the rest of the council members have said, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope you have the very best. And that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from open, from open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to local government article section three dash three oh five B eight, to get an update on pending opioid litigation to protect attorney-client privilege, after which time we shall reconvene for a second and final legislative session. That's a motion.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We are now adjourned from legislative session, the very first open work session is a reallocation CARES grant funding. Mrs. Hurley?
Yes, so as you mentioned, it's a reallocation of CARES grant funding in an amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand to provide for the design and engineering costs for a new above-ground fuel farm facility, and to add the project funding to the fiscal year twenty-two capital budget and fiscal year twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement program, and Mr. Tony Rudy here, airport manager.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Rudy. How are you?
Good morning. So what this project entails is, in two thousand and twenty-five, I know it's a little ways off, but we're, we're planning ahead because the airport, the fuel farm that exists now is owned and operated by Bayland Aviation. Their lease comes up in two thousand and twenty-five. At the end of that lease, they're required either to sell the fuel farm to the county or to someone else. It has been in the ground for over thirty years now, and the airport's stance is that we don't want to assume that liability, not knowing condition of the tanks. They have been, they've been doing some testing, some groundwater testing, so there's no contamination, there's no leaks that we know of at this time. However, being thirty years old, it's a long time for, for a tank to be in the ground. So our goal is to have those tanks removed at that time, but in order to keep the airport operating, obviously, we have to have another fuel farm up and running. So right now, with the available CARES money we have, we figured it'd be a good time to put that to use to fund at least the, the design, preliminary design and engineering work that needs to be done.
You including, when I read this, this is the one hundred and ninety-nine thousand is for design and engineering, so the removal of tanks, is that in the one ninety-nine, or is that called?
No, that's, the removal of the tanks is a responsibility of Bayland Aviation.
That's their responsibility. Okay, thank you.
Whose responsibility? Is it to remove the tanks?
That would be Bayland Aviation's.
Okay, and they're going to be responsible for the hazard mitigation if there is any?
That's correct.
Okay. And that won't fall back on the county?
No.
Okay, thank you. You said they had three options, either to take the tanks up, sell them to someone else. Do they not have the option to renew the lease?
They do, but we, at that time, we would like to have those tanks out of the ground because of their age and our concerns for possible environmental contamination.
Understand. I guess.
So even, even if they did renew their lease, or, well, it would actually, at that time, it'd have to go out to bid, but if we did choose them to be the, the FBO at that time, they could use this new facility.
I see. I guess, one question is, above-ground fuel tanks on an airport? I know that, I know the sense, how sensitive is to have tanks in the ground because of the environmental thing, but is an above-ground tanks at an airport sort of a danger?
Now, it's, it's a very common practice.
Is it common practice?
Yeah, most, most tanks are getting out of the ground, and in fact. Yeah, most, most tanks are getting out of the ground and, in fact, being stored above ground. And there is, there is a secondary containment component to this.
Well, I know about the containment. My concern was somebody flying in. That was my concern.
Well, it's, it's positioned such that it's, it's pretty far from the runways.
Is that right?
The chances of that happening are probably being struck, like, being struck by lightning, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, I have a friend that's been struck by lightning, so that's not, that's not all that uncommon, but anyway. So that is a practice at airports to have tanks above the ground. Okay, all right, that's fine. It was just a question.
Any other questions?
I do have one comment. You mentioned that you're reallocating some of this funding from other projects, and it was CARES funding that you had anticipated using. Is that because we didn't get approved for use of those CARES fundings for those projects?
So it kind of rolls into the next item that's on the agenda for the automated parking lot attendant. We wanted to reallocate that money because that equipment purchase is not eligible, and we were going to pay for that equipment by using unspent fiscal year '21 funds. But then we would pull, we were short, I believe, 40, $49,000, which we would be pulling out of operational expenses in our fourth year of the CARES allocation. And just to go along with that for your information, yesterday, we had the new round of grants, the American Rescue Plan grant that came through and was executed yesterday in the amount of, it's 1.34 million, so that'll actually more than, more than cover some of these expenses.
Good, great. You're doing very good work as far as keeping up with all this. I'm not kidding, between the FAA and the, and the monies that are coming in, it's no, it's no easy task. I guess we could, any other questions in reference to this one issue?
On the automatic parking attendant equipment, are we still with a vendor on that, or are we now?
Yeah, we still, we still want to go ahead and purchase that, and as I mentioned, that's a next engine, item on the agenda.
Yeah, Joe's referring to the second, the second work session, which is the proposed amendment to the fiscal year '22 capital budget. So they both tying together. Go ahead, Mr. Rudy.
Yes, so, so this was bid last, I'm trying to remember now. It was in the springtime, we, we put out proposals for this equipment, so we, the vendors been hanging on with us until we finally find out how we were going to pay for this. So they've been, they've been really good to work with.
Is our parking revenue still one of the major revenue generators at the airport?
Yes, it is.
I know at one time it was the largest.
It, it still is.
Is it?
Between parking and rental cars.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a friend of mine who, who asked me, insisted that the county needed to go to automated parking, I think it was like 15 years ago. Why don't you have an automated system? You'd save a fortune, but we're getting there, all right? So any other questions or comments in reference to the above-ground fuel farm or the automated parking attendant, sort of like dovetail them both together? Any other comments, Mr. Rudy? Yeah, okay. That concludes the open work session. Mrs. Hurley, you had a comment?
I'll just say the next step is to have a public hearing on these since they're capital projects, and we can have that on January the 4th at 6:00 PM.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rudy, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The tenants, we have our honorable delegate Carl Anderton. Glad to have you here, Carl. I know you come to quite a few of these.
Yes, sir.
High entertainment value, right?
It's at 12:30 somewhere.
I appreciate that. At this time, we, we are going to take a recess for lunch. We're early with our agenda. When we come back, we'll be back in open work session in reference to the letter of support for property protection legislation, which is what Delegate Anderton is here for. Colin, I know you're here as well.
Do you want to do that real quick?
Well, a lot of people, I must tell you, a lot of people will not be here until about 12:15. Okay, so for once, we have a little bit of longer recess for lunch, and normally, we're rushed into 15-minute segments, so.
Can we do the closed work session?
Excuse me?
The closed work session?
We, we have someone else participating by Zoom, so that's a scheduled time.
Well, there's a request to go into closed work session right now.
She said I got to go into Zoom.
Someone's Zooming right now.
Not for the closed?
Yes.
Oh, for the closed, I'm sorry, okay. All right, so we will take, unfortunately, we are, we don't have time restraints, but with the circumstances, we're going to have lunch.
To move.
Thank you.
Is it lunch here?
Second. We don't need, we don't need a motion to prove recess, thank you.
I'll do that anyway.
Yeah.